July. It's one thirty and we have all of our commissioners present for this work session. It's not a public meeting. It's a, it's, it's a public meeting, but not a public hearing. So no public comments will be taken. The first agenda item is a discussion and or action for approval of minutes for the commission work session held on July twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item number two is a discussion regarding the financial results for the twenty twenty four second quarter. We have Mr. Scott Park, Miss Stephanie Ebert, Senior Ricky Hatch, and we welcome you here to, to be here. Thank you so much. Inasmuch as Mr. Park, you're listed first. Why don't you start us off, please?
All right. So you've seen this presentation.
It's a beautiful thing.
It's a beautiful thing. Every quarter you see it with slightly different numbers. So we'll just jump right into it. Okay, so.
Oh, yeah, thanks. That's gonna help with Chris gone.
Yeah. Wow, that is bright now.
General lights. I wonder why they're kind of this mood lighter.
Chris, Chris had that headache, so.
Oh, I guess he brings darkness.
Okay, so where we're at, so a year ago, our unemployment rate was at two point six percent, which is well under the five percent like this, the, you know, a healthy unemployment rate, which meant that we couldn't find employees. They wanted a lot more money. So the cost of hiring somebody new was great. Uh, we're three point three percent unemployment rate right now, which is still historically very, very low. But what it does, if you look over to the right side of this charge, you see that the cost of our employees is decreasing. Well, it's still growing, but growing at a slower rate. So whereas before, you know, we were um, six percent, six and a half percent year over year cost increase. Now we're, we're four and a half percent. So we're still going, we're still, costs are still going up, but they're just going up at a decreasing rate. Does that make sense? Still, still increasing, but just not as bad as they were. So here's our inflation rates. Um, you see the big COVID bump. I think that we've stabilized. Uh, you can see over the last year, we've really been around between three, three and a half on average. Um, I watched several um forecast, seven economic forecasts. They're claiming that the feds will lower interest rates once or twice this year. So what they're basically saying is that we've hit the peak and that this is kind of that. We've, we've stabilized our inflation rate between, you know.
You think the feds will lower interest rates this year?
That is what the consul, or the uh, econo- economic professors and everyone are telling me. I.
I think this did. Like last week.
Um.
They sound.
No, I, I didn't see it, a rate decrease. The, the European equivalent lowered their rates, but I didn't see the US lower our rates. Um, maybe I missed it.
They're talking September.
Yeah.
For the first one, but there's pressure on to do it before then, but.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll happen.
So what that basically means is they're saying inflation is under control. And so we don't have to get inflation down anymore, which would mean that three percent to three, three and a half percent would be, I guess, the new normal. Instead of two percent, which was their previous target. Um, I just, you know, that's something that I try to guess, just like everybody else. If I was really good at it, I'd make a lot of money in the private sector, you know, but uh, I just, I see what everybody else says, and that's what they're, they're reporting. Hey, I want to jump into Weaver County now. So if you look, these are our, and I'm not sure why. Oh, yeah, yeah, you can see the years at the bottom. So we had that big spike that we were not expecting in sales tax um, in those COVID years and right after. And then twenty twenty three, we were actually less than what we were in twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty four year to date, which January through June, we're up a hundred and five percent. We had predicted growth of four percent this calendar year. The state estimate was three point eight. I think we're going to be fine at four percent. I don't anticipate much more than that. Um, next year, the state lowered their forecast down a little bit. So I think we'll get between about three and a half to three point seven five percent new growth uh, next year. But this year, I think we're okay keeping our projections at four percent, which is what we used our budget, or built our budget on.
You said new growth, but you're talking growth in sales tax right now.
Sales tax, yes. Uh, property tax, we can get to that in just a second, but uh, I wanted to go over, so January to June revenues, just so you can see general fund. Um, we're down just a teeny bit, but nothing that I'm worried about. Looking to the different revenue sources, I think we're fine. Culture Parks and Rec, we're right where we expect to be. And Municipal Services Fund, we're right where we expect to be. There were some timing issues in some of those years, and I understand what they are, but we're tracking right where we should be over the last few years in terms of our revenue. Expenses, um, salaries and wages forty five percent. That's because we're actually able to hire and keep more people. Uh, twenty twenty two was an odd year in terms of we had so many open positions. That's why our expenses were low. That's why our travel and training was low. Um, we're a little ahead on our travel and training. That was the timing of a couple of different conferences. I'm not super worried about that. Um, the equipment and debt, again, that goes back to some timing of when we're making some of these big purchases and our current expenses. They're right where we would expect them to be for this time. Um, looking at our enterprise funds, so these are the three. And technically, the garage is an internal service fund, but we, we look at it the same way. So our transfer station, we're up two million dollars. Animal shelter, we're down twenty six thousand dollars. The garage, we're up nine thousand dollars. So I'm very happy with the transfer station and the garage, the animal shelter. We continue to watch that. We have um, pressures to increase our costs. Uh, for, I mean, we're paying for things, higher prices for things now more than we're a little while ago, but we're still watching that and twenty six thousand dollars is not too bad. Our reserves are, are fine to cover that. So I don't think we need to make any changes to any of these three um funds right now is what I'm saying. Um, wanted to uh, just show you in detail a little bit more. Normally we do our budget changes. We're not going to do budget changes. This time we did them just a few weeks ago. Um, a little earlier than normal. But uh, this is a report that uh, I'm sorry. Can't talk and type at the same time. Just kind of gives you an idea. It's a format that the state likes um, and ask us to use. I've showed it to you a few times before. It gives you more detailed information than basically we just showed you in those slides. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but as I went through, I look at this every quarter. Um, my highlight was red, anything that looks really weird. And, and so far, I don't think that there's anything that looks weird, anything that we need to discuss. I am trying to figure out why I can't see my page down button. So there we go. Um, Municipal Services Fund, um. Interestingly enough, our licenses and fees and our building inspection permit revenue is up higher than what I would have expected it to be, which means that we're um, our building permit reviews are seventy nine percent of what we budgeted for the full year. We're only halfway through the year just over. And our plan review fees were at a hundred and three percent of our budget so far this year. So we're gonna exceed our plan reviews and our building permits, which means we've got more new growth. And that's gonna factor into our property tax. Uh, we originally had bud- budgeted about three percent new growth this year. I was worried that it was gonna come in a lot lower, but I think we're going to be fine at the three percent. Uh, Mark, we are seeing some pickups in some of these subdivisions, as you're aware, and Sean's aware of different developments that are going on. Next page. Your transfer station, we just talked about those three, so I, I don't, I don't have any concerns with any of those, looking at their financials. I think we keep the rates the same as they are right now for transfer station. We just watch that for another year if we need to.
We discussed that last two or three months, right?
Yep, yep. And I just, every, every quarter I ask that same question. Is the transfer station right? Sufficient to cover and, you know, just to see if there's anything new that's come in. Same with our sales tax and our property tax. All those estimates still legitimate, or do we need to make a change? I don't think we need to make any changes at this point here. With that, commissioners, that's all I had on the uh, the update. It was uh, fast this time. And do you have any specific questions? We could go over capital project budgets. I, I didn't know if you wanted to use this time to just move on your next meeting, or if you had any other specific questions on finances that we could go over.
We have another couple of couple of moments, uh, if you want to, commissioners, or we can saunter, whatever you choose.
No, the presentation, I, I think we'll have opportunity for capital budget sessions over the next couple of weeks as we get into that, so.
Okay.
Good.
Entertain the motion to saunter for ten minutes.
Somewhere.
Second.
Roll call, Sharon, Commissioner Bollos, Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll be back in about ten minutes for those online and those in the room.
And welcome you back to our work session on this Monday, the 29th of July. The next item is listed as a closed session to discuss the character and competence of an individual. To do that, we'll need to put this for vote or a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Second. It's a roll call vote. Commissioner Bollos.
Aye.
Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we'll move to a closed session and we'll be back when we're finished with that business. Christie, if you'll bring in the recorder. Thank you.
I don't think we have to record it.
We've left. We've left the closed session now, we'll come back to the work session. Christie, if you're hearing this, if you'll please restaff the room where we'll have a discussion on surplus parcel with Scott Mendoza, Sean Wilkinson and Bill Ross. Please stand by. Welcome back to the Weaver County Work Session on this Monday, the 29th of January. We are on item four, which is a discussion to surplus parcel. We have Scott Mendoza, Sean Wilkinson and well, we have Bill Ross here. Scott, why don't you go ahead with that?
Okay. Commissioner, I believe that we talked about this before, I'd be happy to pull up. You are familiar with Nilson Homes and JDC Ranch Properties.
Correct.
Okay, at the very south end of an existing subdivision called Homestead Subdivision. There is what I believe is the JDC project.
Yeah.
What I've highlighted there is parcels that the county has owned for quite some time. I've asked the surveyor's office to do a little research and give us some information on that. Nilson Homes has come to us several times. We have just continued to ask Nilson Homes for something that shows that they are the adjacent owner. They haven't been the adjacent owner, so as you know, we always kind of hesitate to sell off a county-owned parcel to somebody that isn't an adjacent owner because it could cause some, some problems. Nilson Homes has just come to us with the deed showing that they have just acquired that land. So they are indeed the adjacent owner and they're interested in buying that. I believe that the assessor's office has a value on that of about $2,400. So we just wanted to inform you that Nilson Homes has come, they are the adjacent landowner. Asking if you're comfortable with us taking a next step, which is to put it on an agenda and let you act on it as far as putting it or declaring it surplus officially.
Commissioner Bollos.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Faur, this is in your portfolio.
Yeah, I'm good with them.
Okay.
Great. That is it on that. Okay.
Is that everything? Is that everything on the, on the surplus property?
It is.
Great. Our next item commissioners is item five, which is a review of proposed change orders for the Children's Justice Center. And Mr. Wilkinson, go ahead, Mr. Mendoza.
I have a report for you that shows change orders that you have seen before and the ones that are highlighted are change orders that we're talking about today. So the previous change orders on that list, you'll see WC one, WC two, WC four R two, WC five R one, WC seven, eight, nine. You've taken action on those, those make up change order one. What we're talking about today is change order two. That's WC 11 R one, WC 12 and WC 15. You can see the dollar amounts associated with each one of those WCs, which are also just proposed change orders. We want to present those to you in a work session today. Make sure that you're comfortable with us working with Wadman to put it on a more formal form, turn it into an actual change order and bring it to you in a commission meeting so you can act on change order two, which is essentially an amendment to the contract between Weaver County and Wadman Construction.
Commissioner Bollos.
And Steve is here to explain any finer details, if you have any, we'd be happy to run through those.
Thank you. Mr. Bollos, any questions?
Yeah, I do have one question. So the contract change that you have here at the bottom, that's the total so far, including this change order two.
Great. So yes, contract change. So that includes everything. $221,257, correct. That is everything to date. You remember WC three, we were holding off of because that was a fence along the west side. If we, that 221 includes the west fence. If we were to take away the west fence, it's $206,371. So it's actually less. And just to let you know, we have a budget of $7,823,000, which includes a contingency of approximately $760,936. If we subtract that sum of all changes to date, we still have about $540,000 in the contingency. So things are going very well, I think. And I believe that we're getting to a stage within the construction where it's going to stabilize. We're not going to have many more unknowns, although we do have some soil, just some, some additional soil things to take care of, but I think things are becoming a little more predictable.
Well, just because we have the money doesn't mean we have to spend it.
That's true.
Commissioner Faur, or does that conclude your questions, Commissioner Bollos? Thank you. Commissioner Faur.
So explain to me why we need, why don't flooring materials? That was part of the bid. We had an addendum five during the bidding process and somehow that didn't get out to the county's bid portal to the contractor. We've got part of the first change order had some of the flooring. This is the stair treads and risers.
Okay.
And so this is part of the actual bid document, but it didn't get to the contractor.
Why didn't it get to the contractor? I don't understand that.
I don't think that detail, so we came back and had to add some things to the contract that were in what we call addendum five. I don't think those things, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that those details were in the drawings when they went out for bid.
Right.
I don't know what it was, why that happened. I don't know if a layer was turned off within the drawing itself before it got, you know, sent to us.
Somehow what happened was we had five addendums to the bid documents and the last one didn't get submitted to the contractors for bidding, so they didn't have that in their bid.
So we didn't check a box that was on our end?
Well, no, there was, the design went out for bid and it was bid on. But then there was some additional information that was supposed to go out based on the original design. And it just, for some reason, it didn't get out and we double checked this. Wadman, in their review of the construction documents, they caught that and said, whoa, wait a minute, this wasn't in our bid. Why wasn't it? We went back and made certain, we triple checked this to make certain that that information was not out there for them to see and then have them submit a bid. What happened, well, we verified the fact that that information did not get to them and so their bid did not include the flooring materials on the stairs with the landing. So we don't, we did double check that just to make sure that we weren't adjusting the cost of the contract. And they had already seen that information and essentially bid on it before. They, they didn't. And like I said, that was in the original design. This, the materials for those stairs.
Okay. All right. Well, so you say we're stabilizing. I, I agree with Chair Harvey. You know, contingencies are not meant just to spend. They're meant to hopefully go back into a pot of money that we could use somewhere else. So I understand what you're saying, but you know, it starts concerning me when we, you know, how many more of these we're going to see? I, you know, unforeseen circumstances like the soils and some of those, then those are, that should go in the contingency.
Right.
But something like this for flooring should have been obvious from day one. So that's, you know, I struggle, I struggle with that, quite frankly.
That detail was just not in the information that got out of bid.
I mean, I, I get why, but I just still struggle with the concept of why that wasn't clarified upfront.
Was there anything else in that layer that would come from after today? Is there anything else?
There were some of those items that were addressed or taken care of in change order one.
Correct. The flooring part was part of change order one.
So addendum five consisted of some flooring, obviously.
Right, flooring, then the stairs is the flooring part, this is the landing.
What other items were in addendum five?
I think that was, at the top of my head, was just the flooring issues.
So there was $3,800 in WC FR one that was a change in flooring.
Right.
Are there any other items in those previous WCs that were?
No, that was just that one.
Will the commissioners see any additional items that are a part of addendum five?
No.
Because are you concerned with the cost for the flooring? If so, I mean, we could talk to Steve about different flooring materials. There, there need to be, there needs to be something on the stairs and landings, but.
No, I, I just struggle with, you know, kind of the view from why it wasn't this handled before and how much more. My main concern is how much more we're going to see over the next six months or 10 months. And okay, now we need an upgrade on carpet and you know, I guess what I want to be careful of is I don't want the word getting out there that county's got $500,000.
Worse off touch.
Let's go spend them. So.
What's the, go, sorry, go ahead.
I see. I would just let the contractor or anybody else know that, hey, future change orders from my standpoint speaking for me are probably not going to go quite as smooth as from here on out. Because I get a feeling that we've got an eye on that 500,000, which if you're contractor, I understand that. But from a county standpoint, we've got, those are taxpayer dollars. So.
Question.
Understood.
How, how many sets is, this is just for me. How many stairs are there? Is it the ones going to the second level?
No, it's, it's basement, there's two, two floors. So there's four, four runs of stairs, so probably 38 or so. Plus the landings, there's four landings and additional, six additional stairs.
Okay, I.
And the material is about $180 square foot.
Whoa. That's installed.
Right. I believe it's installed, I don't know, it could be off. I think it's just material.
Which I did my own stair the other.
Well, they're what? Aren't they seventy bucks a stair tread for forty-five inch? I don't know how wide these are.
Steve, I've got the.
They're four feet.
The call here's seeing, there's a breakdown from the sun.
Right. And I did analysis on special.
We just said on that. Precision. Oh, he didn't break it down.
There's materials and labor that we're looking for there. Everything beyond the twenty-two thousand you're seeing there is overhead profit. It's Wadman's markup. That's why it comes to the twenty-four, not the twenty-two that you see on that proposal from the.
No problem. I respect that. Wow. It reinforces why I do my own labor when I couldn't rail.
Exactly. But having to start on with, it's a lot, a lot more than what I thought it was going to be too.
Yeah. Okay. What do you want to do? I, hey, okay, we're good. It's three S's.
Thank you. You will see this next on a commission meeting agenda, um, probably under title CJC change order two.
Yeah, we don't, we don't like those things appearing on a commission agenda without seeing it first here.
No, we don't really like that.
Yeah, great. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, motion for item six.
I'll send to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I were adjourned. Thank you.
So commissioners, well, I've got you. Is that, is that agenda?